I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Rogers, thank you, sir. Well, again, good morning. Very glad to have you with us here today. The time is nine oh two. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court held on May the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments concerning the minutes?
Hearing that judge, I move we approve the Commissioners Court minutes for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four as presented.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes from previous meeting of Commissioners Court held on May the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four is presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number two is to consider and take action to proclaim May two thousand twenty-four as Mental Health Awareness Month here in Henderson County. And we hope that through some of the efforts of many of the organizations that we have in the county, NAMI, the Andrews Center, there are many organizations that are trying to assist folks that sometimes are stigmatized through difficulties of their thoughts, circumstances. There's so many different things that we've come to learn over the years that contribute to mental illness. And shining more of a light on what mental health really is and what it means is what we're here to do today. And we have a proclamation here that I'll read, and it begins with, whereas mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Henderson County. Whereas, one in five Americans experience a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. Whereas, despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. Whereas, early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. Whereas, May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat the stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, it be resolved, the County Commissioners Court of Henderson County does hereby proclaim May twenty-fourth as Mental Health Awareness Month in Henderson County. We encourage all residents of Henderson County to educate themselves about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge the stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Seeking help if they are struggling with their mental health and encourage others to do the same. Supporting the organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy. And also create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental health well-being and seek help when needed. That concludes what we have in our proclamation, but it does open opportunity for discussion. So much of what we do in our daily lives is impacted, and sometimes, mental health is brought on by nature when I say that, a propensity or having certain... want to be careful with this, to be quite honest with you, because it is that stigma we want to be so careful of. There are individuals that cannot help mental health. There are behavioral decisions through life that lead to mental health issues. It's a much broader subject than what we traditionally think of, especially in a... being here in Henderson County, we're all bootstrap type people, you know, muscle through it, get it done. But there is so much more to it. And we want to bring awareness to it and begin shining a light upon just how few resources that we have. Couple items that you'll see in the agenda coming up will be taking actions on our part to assist in developing more mental health programs here in the county. So with that, court, I'll be happy to entertain discussions and comments or even questions, if you have any. If there are no conversations to be had at this time, because as I said, we'll have an opportunity to talk some more on the following items. We have a motion for approval of the proclamation?
I make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Rickson to proclaim May two thousand twenty-four as Mental Health Awareness Month in Henderson County. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, court. Now, item three is consider and take action to add amendments ten and eleven to Southern Health Partners contract for inmate healthcare here in our facilities. And we have the sheriff with us, and Ms. Goggins is going to speak along with this as well. So before I open it up to the sheriff, there's been the last year, year and a half, we have really taken an in-depth dive, and I believe is the best way to look at it, on issues within our correctional facility, our jail. We have begun to identify more and more of these very issues that we discussed with the mental health. In response to, many of you have known about the Sandra Bland Act, which really began to pushing on our correctional facilities about identifying these individuals that we have incarcerated. There have been procedures put in place that helps at the jail to being able to identify these, and we're going to get into the discussion a little bit on just because of these procedures, we have a better understanding of those individuals in our facility and the lack of services that we have, services, the lack of resources that we have in rural Texas. And it's not unique to Henderson County. It's very widespread. So sheriff, with that opening, I'll pass it over to...
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, court. Amendments ten and eleven have a lot to do with the mental health issues that we are having and facing inside the Henderson County Jail. This morning, we had four hundred and fifty-one individuals booked into the Henderson County Jail, and a really conservative number. You can think about probably thirty percent of those individuals are going to have some type of mental illness, whether it be due to some type of substance abuse issues or something like that, but there's a lot of them that come in with these types of issues. So you take four hundred and fifty-one individuals, that's about a hundred and thirty-five of those are going to be having, facing some type of mental illness inside the facility. Southern Health Partners, y'all have assisted us in the past, and we actually do have a psych RN there that Southern Health Partners furnishes, and she spends thirty hours a week inside the facility, basically counseling with these individuals and working with the doctor to see if there's anything that we can do to help them. And they've had some success the past few months. They've got a nurse practitioner in there that comes once a week. She spends four hours a week inside the facility and working with the psych RN, she's restored about six individuals, basically bringing them back to competency. And that's really where we're struggling right now, inside the facility. The psych RN is seeing about, on average, about thirty clients a week that she's having to basically deal with. And when you talk about thirty clients a week and thirty hours a week, you know, that can be pretty taxing. So it's a real need. Whenever Dr. Allen here, whenever they face a felony charge, they end up, a lot of times they'll have Dr. Allen come into the facility to see if these individuals are competent. He assesses them, and a lot of them, he finds to be incompetent, and that's really when we start slowing the wheel down here in Henderson County. Not just here, I mean, it's all over the state. But once he finds them incompetent, then they go on a forensic bed waitlist. And they're basically, the prosecution will stop and be put on hold until we can see if we can restore that individual. Well, they sit on this waitlist, and right now, it's about a two-year waitlist. So they sit in Henderson County Jail for two years. Then they get to go to their state bed, because there's not enough state beds out there. They usually restore them within three to six months, and then they come back restored on their medication. And then they can pick up with the prosecution and proceed through the court system. So what Amendment ten is going to do is it costs sixty-seven thousand dollars, a little over that, and the nurse practitioner that's there already once a week on Fridays, well, she will be there a secondary day, and on her secondary day, the only thing she's going to focus on is mental health issues. And she's got specialized training in mental health. We're lucky to have her as our doctor right now. That's the only way we've restored the six that we have restored. But we're hoping that with her seeing these clients and focusing on nothing but mental health on one day a week, then we can restore these clients before they ever go to, they'll be on the state bed waiting list. But if we can get them restored and get somebody to come back and reassess them once the medical professionals think they're restored, and hopefully, we can find them competent, and they're not sitting in jail for the two-year wait period, then they can get back and the case can move forward, and we can do it in-house. And it all reverts back to there's just not enough state beds out there to get the job done. The county jails across the state of Texas are now the local mental health authority in the state of Texas, and I truly feel, along with the other sheriffs across the state, that that's not right, but it's the way it is. And so we're trying to adapt and overcome and make things better and speed the process up. And I really think at the end of the day, it should stay in the long run. I've talked to Ms. Monk. She has found the funding for this program. The county attorney's office has looked over the agreement. There's not any issues with the agreement that they can find, and it's just a normal amendment that we've done since we started the contract with them in two thousand and ten. I feel real confident that Southern Health Partners will do what they say they're going to do.
Ms. Goggins, if you would, come up and talk about what you have been able to, what the numbers are showing you, because we have two sets, correct, Chuck? We have these that are incarcerated on the restoration side, and then we have those that have a different route we have to deal with with those. And if you would, Ms. Goggins.
Well, with your early intervention and your numbers that you're seeing, that when these people are coming in and they're being booked in, the numbers that we saw in just May, so twenty days, you had a hundred and nine people who were flagged with something that showed, that said, here's a flag saying possible mental health. You had thirty-five who were exact match. So thirty-five of those people out of twenty days have been either in a facility or been to a, I guess, yeah, as a client of either Andrews Center or another facility itself, not necessarily inpatient, but have been. So these people have been exact match as having mental health issues, and that's thirty-five that walked into your jail in twenty days. So that I think the, if you could get an early intervention and help, get your mental health, your mental personnel, your medical personnel to be able to identify and to get in there early, then that would help move the process and would help these people.
And with that, because so many times with these, it's almost catch and release.
Yes, yes.
Because they're, because of their condition, there are no resources of support for these individuals, and it's a habitual cycle. I mean, it just in and out, in and out.
Correct. You're dealing with low-level, some of these are low-level crimes that it is, it's in and out, and they're not getting the help that they need. So if you had somebody on the inside to give them an early intervention, would positive our community.
And this deals with Amendment ten?
Yes, sir.
This is all Amendment ten?
Okay, sir.
Discussions on Amendment ten before we invite Amendment eleven?
I'd heard the sheriff mentioned a felony crime, so will this cover misdemeanor crimes too, that they play on a misdemeanor?
Yes, sir. I mean, she's going to, she's going to touch base with, usually though, the way, when you go to a forensic bed and you're on, and you know the waitlist is two years, the maximum punishment for a misdemeanor crime is one year, three hundred and sixty-five days. So a lot of these don't ever end up on a forensic bed waitlist because they timeout. Most of our individuals that come in on, most of these, a lot of them come in on Class B misdemeanors, so they sit there for a hundred and eighty days. And then once they sit there for a hundred and eighty days, the county attorney's office usually looks at those and says, look, we can't, they've already been in there for the maximum amount of time for that charge, so they end up releasing the individual. While they're in our custody, this mental health nurse practitioner will see them also and try to get them on a regiment and do their best to level them out. Once we turn them out, that's, that's the only thing that concerns, once we turn them out, they're going to be back out, and we're just going to hope that they go and stay on the medication regimens that they're put on. But yes, they're going to, the ones that's going to be difficult to work with is your Class C arrest, because a lot of times, they come in and they're gone in five days, so we may be able to get them on some medication. I just don't know if your Class Cs are going to be in there long enough to get them leveled out to where they need to be.
And some of this is that, because they're, one, they are not supported outside of being incarcerated for multiple reasons. What this begins to do is identifying them better through our efforts, beginning treatments, and then hopefully, in the future, we have had of developing further coordination efforts. That is someone that when you're about to release, that can eventually coordinate these services with our other resources. And with everything, you have to get buy-in. You have to get buy-in from your providers, you have to get buy-in from the client. And what we're beginning here is going, this is steps one and two. There may be thirty more steps before we get to a point to where we're actually able to actively support this community within our community. We have, rural Texas is at such a disadvantage when that we have expansive spaces, which makes travel very difficult for many of these individuals to get to where the resources are. Funding, another issue. There are so many things that we struggle with, obstacles that we have to overcome. You just won't bite at a time, and this is the beginning of that process, what we hope Any other thoughts on Amendment ten?
I'd like to commend the sheriff and the sheriff's department for putting this item on the forefront, because I don't believe most people, even elected officials and the community in general, understand that the jail is the mental health facility. And that's not what, that's not what it was designed for. And you said, any given day, thirty percent have mental health problems. Well, that's a hundred and twenty people out of the four hundred and eleven have mental health. And we, we service thirty. What happened to the other ninety?
Oh, she's servicing them. I mean, she's, she's, she's seeing them. You know, she's just only able to see about thirty a week. So I mean, she's...
I mean, we can understand it. One psychologist or psychiatrist or...
She's actually the one that, the one that's in there right now is a mental health registered nurse.
Okay. Well, all of us understand that she can't see a hundred and twenty patients.
Right.
You know, there's no way. So, you know, it's a, it's a jerk strain that's been pulled around our necks. And, you know, when you get to... And we don't get a whole lot of complaints about that when we get complaints on other stuff. So I think it's important that the sheriff brings this forward and lets everyone know that we are, that Henderson County is, and all over the state too, Henderson County is trying to do something to alleviate this problem.
This segment of the population, you know, because of the stigma, they can't advocate for themselves. There are many out there that do try to, but as you said, there's so many other pressing matters that it falls back. You know, I think over the last year, we've had a lot of discussions about that.
I want to thank Angie too. She does a lot to help. Seems like about ninety percent of the time I go to her office, she's on a case on a, on a mental health issue, so.
Yeah, she's working with not only the judge's office, but the other courts here, and helps us identify who we need, and the names come across every... When she was talking about people flagging, when you come in to book in an individual, we're required by law due to the Sandra Bland Act to run them what's called a CCQ. And that's where the probable exact matches or possible matches come through the system. And when she sees the name, she'll pick up the phone and call me, or she, for a lot of times, she doesn't even call me. She starts calling the, our local health, the Andrews Center, and starts saying, hey, what can we do? Can we, can we help this individual out? So she does, she does a lot for us.
The prosecutors play a big role in this as well. Special thanks, there's some other items that are being developed within the legal process that the county attorney's office and Mr. Traum has helped us with to develop. And it's going to be a long process, but it's one that we'll eventually get there as time goes by, and again, this is step one. We'll move on to Amendment eleven.
Amendment eleven is basically for a EMR, which is an electronic medical record. And this is really going to assist us whenever we have our meetings away from the jail. We'll probably have at least a monthly meeting with, hopefully, the county attorney's office, the district attorney's office, the county judge's office, and then our nurse practitioner that are seeing these individuals. And basically, their inmate medical file will be electronic, and it'll assist not only the nurses inside the facility, but the other medical personnel that are trying to assist these individuals. Now, this one here, it's about a thirty thousand dollar a year commitment. I'm willing to, we've got some new things coming with our commissary portion that we're going to be doing some different things with our commissary program. So I can, I can pay for this out of commissary funds. I just was wanting the court's blessing to get the EMR. It's going to cost me about twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and I'm going to make plenty of that with our new program. We're going to well exceed that expense with a new program that we're going to have in the commissary fund. So it is the second piece to this, and I will be during budget bringing the third piece back.
Questions concerning Amendment eleven? And both of these require the sheriff's signature?
Judges.
All the judges. All right. Any further discussion about it?
Sheriff, thank you for what y'all have done and the team that you put together for Henderson County to keep us protected, but also for people that don't have the choice and can make the choices for themselves. So we, everybody I know greatly appreciates it.
Thank you.
Judge, with nothing else, I move we approve Amendment ten and Amendment eleven to the Southern Health Partners contract for inmate health services with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley and seconded by Commissioner Rickson to approve Amendments ten and eleven to the Southern Health Partners contract for inmate healthcare with the county judge's authorization to sign. Are there any further comments? I really do want to add to this about what an effort this is across a lot of organizations. It really is. The involvement of the local mental health authority at times, Health and Human Services, they're integral in this. Prosecutors, sheriff's office, Angie and Angela have lifted the administrative weight. There's a lot of good stuff left to come, y'all. So with any other, any other discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consider and take action on an interlocal cooperation agreement between the Henderson County Sheriff's Office and the Fire Chiefs Association of Henderson County. Sheriff?
Yes, court, this is actually an agreement between myself and the Fire Chiefs Association that we're asking you to bless, and it is for an active nine-one-one interface. The Fire Chiefs Association is paying for all of this. If there's anything that comes out that needs funding, the Fire Chiefs Association will be the paying source for that funding. And we've worked through some hurdles that we've had. He's worked with our local IT department, and we're at the point where we think we can go ahead and move forward. This is going to assist in dispatching the fire calls and sending out the emails that need to be sent out to the fire departments, and it helps them keep up with the calls that they have and their reporting system on their side, but it'll start through our CAD system when the calls come in. So like I say, it's not going to cost us anything. It's just going to assist with dispatch and then help their reporting system on their side.
Court, this, we had this before us in January of this year, but if you'll remember, we had a few issues, as the sheriff mentioned, that we had to work out. The original term for this was January the first of two thousand twenty-four, and it just picked right up.
Yes, sir. And just so y'all know, Commissioner Spivey reached out to me yesterday, and I had overlooked that. So the date on this actual agreement is dated starting today. I did fix that, and I'll get a copy to everyone that needs it.
And this is a one year or...
It's actually a five year.
Five years.
Yeah, it'll go, it'll stay till... The only date that I changed was the initial starting date.
Okay.
Well, it says it ends in midnight of two thousand twenty-five. Well, it says it ends in midnight of 2025.
Yeah, I messed that up too.
Given that we, the, the previous agreement that we had with the other system, it was a five-year agreement if I remember correctly.
And before this, if, if y'all agree, I can change that date also with y'all's blessing and then sign it and get Chief Herbie to sign it also.
What, what system were we using before?
Jody left, Jody?
Emergency Solutions.
Yes.
And that was just through the fire department?
Yes, sir.
And this is going to connect the sheriff's department?
It's, it's the same type of service that the fire departments are using in their calls. It's, it's, you got, what's the name of this one?
Alpine Software.
Alpine.
AMX.
Alpine Software is a replacement for the one that they've already been using. There's a little more stable system, something they feel that will be more accurate in its addressing, because this is just directly for the fire departments. Law enforcement doesn't use it, it just assists the fire departments.
And when dispatch enters the call, it'll send them the email notification of where the call's at. And they should be using the old software, I believe, used GPS and this one will be using our 911 coordinates for the addresses. So it'll be a lot more accurate for them.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion on the amended contract or interlocal agreement.
I'll make that motion and then I'll get the sheriff's signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the amended interlocal cooperation agreement between Henderson County Sheriff's Office and the Henderson County Fire Chiefs Association for the amended five-year contract. Any further discussion? Sheriff's authorization, sign. All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. All right. Item five, consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes for Henderson County Tax Sessor Collector.
Good morning. I have three refund checks for court approval totaling $10,964.57.
Court questions?
These are all Homestead grants and disabled vet Homestead.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to payment of the refunds.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Sessor Collector as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number six is consider and take action to accept the resignation of David Dees and appoint Ashton Elder to the Emergency Service District Number Eight Board of Commissioners, Commissioners with a term ending December 31, 2025. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, I had received a resignation letter back on May the 8th from Mr. Dees that he was resigning from the ESD eight board. And so we put out word, actually, we had some other bios from other people that when we created this ESD that showed interest, so we got in contact with them to find out. And we had a couple that were, they're interested in it and Commissioner McCam and I had visited and spoke about it and we have chosen to replace David Dees with Ashton Elder on the ESD board number eight. Any questions? Their bio and stuff is listed on the backup.
Questions for the commissioner? Any further discussion? Commissioner, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of David Dees and appoint Ashton Elder to the Emergency Service District Number Eight Board of Commissioners with a term ending December 31st of 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam to accept the resignation of David Dees and appoint Ashton Elder to the Emergency Service District Number Eight Board of Commissioners with a term ending December 31, 2025. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, receive financial reports, which we have none. Item eight is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a biweekly, biweekly 10, early voting week two, and a monthly report.
Which one do you want to start with?
Biweekly 10.
I'm sorry?
Biweekly 10. I'm going to start there.
Court, questions, comments? We can do biweekly number 10 and the elections all at once if you would like. Court's discretion. Any discussion on the, on early voting as well? Entertain a motion.
Sound motion, pray.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the payroll distribution for biweekly number 10 and the early voting payrolls as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Next one is the accounts cash sheet. Any questions concerning the accounts cash sheet for the period ending April 2024? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion through the cash account sheets for April 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tully to approve the accounts cash sheets for a period ending April of 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine is consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we have none. Item 10 is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner?
Yes, I have two, both from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company. One of them is a road bore under County Road 3911 for a private-to-private. And the other is a road bore under County Road 3923 for a private-to-private.
Court, questions for the commissioner?
All paperwork's here and the checks.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the proposed utility line activity for Bethel Ash Water Supply Company for a road bore under 30, County Road 3911 and County Road 3923 with Commissioner's signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with Bethel Ash Water Supply for road bores under County Road 3911 and 3923 with Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 11, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. We have none of those today. Item 12 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2024 and the amount of $134,017.42.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
No, sir. She answered my question yesterday.
Commissioner Tully?
Aye, ma'am.
Commissioner McCam?
No questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
I'd say is we hit a lot of hail damage.
There are quite a big expense on some vehicles with hail damage, that is correct. When you have, when we have a lot of vehicles and it comes through, we're going to have a lot. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $434,917.42 as presented.
I second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills, the amount of $434,917.42 as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 13 is consider and take action on submitted plans. We have none today. Item 14 is open to consider bids, which we have none. And then item 15 is consider and take action to adjourn, which while we're waiting for the bills to come through, mind everyone, the luncheon today for the Farm and Ranch Tour, you know, I think everyone got together this morning to start it off and it's culminate again with the lunching today. We get a motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:41. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you for that.